All right, welcome everybody. It is 6:30, January 6th. This is our normal select board meeting. We'll open as per usual with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Within the mic, you're hungry?
Oh, that's been that way on the...
Oh, really?
Forever. So, roll call. Dave Hemingway, Chair of the Select Board.
Marlo Herrick.
And Dee is not with us yet.
She could be.
She will be soon.
She'll be flying in, we'll see.
Let's see. And so, meeting rules and procedures. Most of the people here will, I'm sure, behave themselves, but we do this typically as a schoolroom fashion. So, please raise your hand if you want to say something and don't interrupt other people. For announcements, I have a couple. Do we have any from town?
I have just a couple short ones.
Go for it.
I just want to bring into anyone's attention that the deadline to submit a petition article for the town warrant is February 4th. To do that, you have to have 25 or more voters. And it's always good to have more because sometimes people think they're on the checklist and they end up not being. So, obviously, they check it and if you're not on it, it may not be valid. That's also the evening I'm thinking, I was going to talk to the Board about scheduling a public hearing on the budget.
There she is.
And that's usually we do it the first Tuesday of February. And that was all I had.
Okay. So, a couple other quick announcements. Today is the last day for your taxes in Webster. If they somehow slipped your mind, you can still pay online before the day is done. And a reminder that while there may not be snow expected to fall right now, please be reminded that the winter parking ban is still in effect. And while I was not planning on doing a Webster Community Power update until the town meeting, I feel that it is needed to do so at this time. Apologies for a couple numbers maybe not being up to date as a result. First, the good news. Webster Community Power has saved Webster residents many thousands of dollars, so far being on average 15% or more below utility prices. As a whole, CPCNH, or Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, has saved the 50-plus communities it's currently serving power to more than $23 million and now has more than 70 member municipalities. Since the launch of Community Power, one of the other goals of CPCNH has been to stabilize rates so that there aren't surprises. And that has also happened effectively. CPCNH continues to seek favorable contracts and projects to lower and stabilize prices further, which will likely be seen soon. While there are other benefits that can be had from Community Power, Webster has joined first and foremost for rate savings. Savings are not always guaranteed beyond our initial launch, though they are always attempted and so far have always been the case. For example, we are currently almost 2 cents lower per kilowatt hour than both Eversource and Unitil, our two utilities in town. But that will not be true for Unitil customers come February. The granite basic rate for the six-month period starting in February will be 8.9 cents per kilowatt hour, which will still beat Eversource. However, it will not beat Unitil for that rate period, who are scheduled for an artificially low 8.3 cents per kilowatt hour. There's still a possibility that their rate may change during the rate period depending on some proposed legislation. But most likely, it will just mean a higher rate for Unitil compared to everybody else for the next six-month rate cycle to follow. While I don't want to go into the weeds of power pricing details, the short version of how this happened is worth knowing. During the current rate period, Unitil spent more than it should have and collected less from customers than it should have. For the February rate period of six months, the PUC during rate setting told Unitil to include credits from the overspend refund in the rate, but to set aside the amount they undercharged for future rate considerations. This has created the upcoming artificially low rate of 8.3 cents per kilowatt hour and an interest-bearing debt account for Unitil that still needs to be paid for in the future. So, for Unitil distribution customers in Webster, what should you do? For the majority of residents who won't pay much attention to things every rate cycle and they don't pay all the detail to every single piece of fine print or when going back to Unitil will result in higher variable rates instead of the mentioned flat rate, it will still probably be best to stay on Webster Community Power so that there's no surprise increases, no surprise increased variable rate and no surprise when their rate likely goes up for the next rate period. However, for those of you that are very good at tracking things, doing things at exactly day-to-day times and looking at the fine print of details, you should look at your billing cycle and consider switching back to Unitil just before the next rate period so you can get the mentioned single rate and then likely switch back to Webster Community Power as the next rate period comes in another six months. The savings will be minimal as it is fractions of a cent versus the 2 cents per kilowatt hour being saved currently by being on Community Power. But especially if you're a high-power bill customer, it may be worth the hassle. This is a prime reason why when we formed Webster Community Power, we made sure there would never be a penalty for opting out or opting in, to make sure you would always have the flexibility to do what is best for you as an individual resident. We can only make sure our rates are always as low as reasonably possible, not that all other rates are always reasonably set. Webster Community Power doesn't exist to make money, but to save all of you money. Hopefully, this update helps you do that. If you wish to pursue any opt-in, out, up-down actions, you can do so easily through the phone by having your most recent bill in front of you, calling 1-866-603-Power or 7697. And the same when you wish to make a change later. You can find that number on our website as well and at communitypowernh.gov. That concludes my announcements.
Thank you.
Okay. Any further announcements? Okay. So, that moves us to our appointments. So, come on down and...
Now you get to move over to that table.
Yeah.
And give us the spiel.
Do you really?
Yeah, go ahead.
Come on down. This isn't the Price is Right, so you're not coming with any.
Wanty hole.
As you know, excuse me, John Rattigan is no longer with the firm and Chris has, I guess, agreed to take us on. And he may change his mind once this is done.
We'll see how it goes tonight.
Anyway, I thought it'd be a good opportunity for the Board to get to know our attorney. Right now, Russ has some zoning issues coming up and we're still working with the Fisher issue, which Chris and I have talked about at length. So, great. You've met Dave Hemingway, the Chair, Marlo Herrick on that end is a Select Board member and Normandy Blake on this end.
Evening. So, my name is Chris Hawkins and as Dana said, John retired. And I'm sort of stepping into his shoes for the Town of Webster, subject to your approval at all times. So, I've been in practice for a little more than 30 years now and municipal law is something that I do. But even more of my experience is in your chair. So, I live in New Market. I've been on the Town Council, the School Board. I'm currently the Town and School District Moderator. I've chaired the ZBA. I've done the Charter Commission. So, I know what it's like to sit in your chairs. You know, the raw power that you enjoy as a member of the Select Board. The public adulation and...
The love.
I like your sense of humor.
All right, he's good, you're done.
And not to mention the pay and the groupies and everything else that you get. So, I've done environmental work. I sit on the New Hampshire Law Association Ethics Committee. I represent attorneys myself. I've done that for a long time. There's very little I haven't done in law, including municipal law. We do a great deal of municipal law in the office and we try to leverage that for your benefit. So, this is our associate, Brandon Latham.
Hello.
Brandon interned with the New Hampshire Municipal Association. He's fairly new to us, but we try to do things in teams. So, it's cost-efficient. If I downstream work to him to do the basic work, it saves you money and it educates him. And that way, if I get hit by a bus, he's familiar with what's happening and he can step in and work with some of our other more experienced attorneys as well, if that's necessary. And if he gets hit by a bus, he's expendable.
Feeling the love already, aren't you?
So, happy to be here and spend time with you. We represent cities and towns of all different sizes.
How about that?
And again, give us an opportunity to help, you know, to help leverage our experience for your benefit. I have spoken to Dana a few times about the Fisher thing and spoke to Russ the other day about some zoning issues that we're taking a look at and trying to figure out how to deal with them efficiently and effectively and get you the outcomes that you want.
I guess I was just going to mention that a lot, we have to really be careful about how many things we get involved with at once.
Yes.
And our theory is, and probably Russ has already told you this, but if we start to make a statement, if you will, that maybe a lot of people will get that message. And so, that's our thought on the zoning issue.
Yeah.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but we also have decided that we're basically just taking them in the order that they presented themselves to us.
Yeah.
Is there any problem with doing that if we're, for example, only pursuing the first one to start with when not going after the second and third? If they're known, but they're further on the list, they're planned, just we haven't got there yet?
Each situation is different and unique and you have to make decisions based on the facts and circumstances and what you think is best for each of those situations. So, there's no, you're not committed to do all of them. You have a lot of discretion to decide what to do and what not to do, how to spend your money efficiently, you know, to get the outcomes that you want based on which situations you think are more serious or more, you know, which may be the largest number of people who are complaining about those particular situations or whatever. But they all have to be evaluated separately. And then Russ and I talk about that and we look at the evidence and then you make decisions. We give advice, you make decisions. You give us direction, we follow your direction, but we give you guidance. And I've been a litigator for 30 years and it's given me a deep skepticism about the cost of litigation. You know, so we try to do things as efficiently as possible because you're not made of money and you want to get bang for your buck. You want to get a return on your investment in attorney's fees, right? Sometimes you're stuck and you don't have a choice. That's different. But, so we try to do things as efficiently as possible and that's part of the reason why Brandon is here.
Yeah.
And sometimes when you work on something that like you said, in the discretion of it may be more people, you know, coming to us to say, hey, then that also sets precedence down the line, correct, to some degree?
Well, not legal precedent. You may feel like you're obligated to act on situations that you think are similar, but you have so much discretion in how your money gets spent and just triaging what's most important to you to the, from the town's perspective in that particular moment in time. So, when we're, if and when we go into non-public, we can talk about these things in more detail, but I haven't even had a chance really to circle back to Russ yet and talk about them. So, that may be a little premature right now. This is the homework that I've done. None of this is on your timesheet. None of this is, you're building for it. It's just me getting up to speed.
Good.
But we have taken a look at Jordans. Dug out some of the papers. John had some paperwork in the file. Russ sent me some documents. And this is just me getting up to speed, us getting up to speed so we can serve you efficiently. That's part of the reason why we're here. It's just to say hello and find out what you see coming up, what you think is going to be important to the town in the next year or so so we can be thinking ahead and trying to anticipate what you need.
I think we try very hard to, and I don't mean to sound like I'm going to say it, but to use the attorney as least as we possibly have to.
Yeah, sure.
And also, but we do have these issues and I think we have a responsibility to the people that live here that have to go by the rules to try and enforce things. And some of the cases we have are very difficult to enforce. And it's been my experience, and I sound like an old curmudgeon when I've done this, but I've been to court a few times, not here, and basically they've handed me my hat and say, see you later. You know, that's someone's inventory or some other type of thing. So, I understand facts are very important. And so, we really need your help steering us in the right directions to make sure that we have what we need to go forward.
Yes. Yep, understood. And Russ and I will be talking about this in more detail. So far, I've understood it's just giving me some background and getting up to speed a little bit.
Yep.
But the ultimate decisions are always up to you. You're the responsible people and then when the bill comes in, you're the ones who get it and then neck from the voters and the taxpayers. So, we respect that.
We do have, and I don't know whether the transfer station is a good example, but we share a transfer station with Hopington. We represent about a quarter of it, the way the agreement is. And there are some very important financial decisions coming up that we might need some legal help with.
Okay. So, Bernie's going to make a note of that? A lot of the towns we're seeing, and I don't know if it's an issue here, but they're under some development pressure. I don't know if you're seeing that. I don't know if you're...
We have, what is it? You have one development on Little Hill.
One, but it's a family development. I don't think it's really like contractors coming in trying to do big divisions here. It's mostly family land.
Yeah, Webster is, I think, kind of unique in the fashion, there's a lot of family land. So, the farmland that people are...
Keeping.
Keeping. I mean, I'm not saying it won't change.
And roughly staying in the family.
That's right, that's right, yeah.
And all subject to change if somebody dies.
It could, it could. It just, you know, that's what...
But don't we have a four-acre or five acres? A four or five acres?
Five acres.
Five acres.
Your five-acre minimum loss size?
Yeah. So, which is next?
For the majority of, for the agricultural residential district. For the residential district, that's Pillsbury Lake, it's lower.
Well, it's still five acres over there. They're just grandfathered in under whatever they were divided as. They can't do lot adjustments, anything, because they're grandfathered lots. The whole town is owned five acres.
But their lots are already divided out.
They're already divided out.
Yeah, so nothing we can do about it.
It's prior.
We see our stuff.
Do you have a lot of very large lots? Say 1,000 acres or more?
I don't know if I would say a lot. There's a couple. And the...
I would say the majority of the larger lots are anywhere from 25 to 100 acres.
But we also have the Blackwater, behind the Blackwater Dam, so nobody can build there because it's a flood control. So, that's about 1,000 acres.
Yeah, the government owns most of it.
Yeah, so, which is kind of nice, you know? I mean, I think it's nice anywhere.
And I don't really want to state names, but it's a famous enough one that it'll be okay. There are a lot of different places where several lots will be owned by the same people, whether it's a family with their farms, et cetera. But we also have a very large contiguous section that's under one particular person and their estate that is all basically kind of preserved and it's set together.
Okay.
So, we're lucky in that way.
Yeah. So, you're not seeing a lot of immediate development pressure at this point?
No, and some of the, some of the farms where like there wasn't necessarily somebody that was going to continue running it for the family. For example, Janeway's, they have a very large farm set and acreage. They've worked to put the entire thing into conservation and it will be run under conservation long after they're not there, so.
The reason I bring this up is we saw in the Town of Brookline, they had a big lawsuit over affordable housing there. And that was resolved just a month ago, this past month.
Did they have zoning at all or any...
They did. They, developers came in. Of course, they're much closer to Nashua.
Oh, yeah, right.
An outline suburb of Nashua, essentially. Somebody wanted to do, I think, 50 units of affordable housing and it became a big thing and there was a big loss. I'll send you a copy of the court order and then you guys can take a look at it. I'm just, that's why I'm curious. It's kind of uppermost in my mind. We represent another town down in that area that's got, very small town, that's got some lots that are, they have four-acre zoning, but they have two or three lots of 1,000 acres or more in single-party ownership. So, they're like, man, that could be 100. In principle, that could be 100 houses or 150 and that would hit that, to hit that town like a bomb.
Yeah, right.
We just like to think, you know? If you see that coming, maybe we take a look at your ordinance. The more interest we've seen has been with solar projects than we have with housing because of the utility lines. I think a lot of people want to connect into that, into the utilities. Right. There's a lot of that in Maine, a lot of solar projects in Maine. There was an electrical subcontractor up there that does a lot of that work. Haven't seen it hit here in a big way, but...
I guess we have more rules than Maine.
A lot more.
Yeah.
Sometimes those rules are good.
I guess so.
We had that when...
We had the solar project that was supposed to be coming in, but that's kind of been caught in limbo for the past, since I've been here, because of various factors to deal with. I think it was Unitil has been giving them a hard time.
Of course they are.
No, it was...
Whoever owns the power lines.
I think it's National Grid.
National Grid.
I think. Because it's the main high-power line that's up there.
Yeah.
And they've gone through probably three different sets of numbers of what they wanted to expect that line would be upgraded to because of different projects that were supposed to use and upgrade the corridor and then didn't. So, it's been all over the place for National Grid and what they've been telling developers. So, who knows?
Is there anything else you guys see coming up in the next year or so that's? Do you have any big capital projects coming up? Nothing like that, I'm guessing?
Complicated articles on the warrant, anything like that?
You know, we really, we really don't. Our big project that we're going to be doing sooner, I hope, rather than later is we're replacing a bridge. And I think that's probably going to be the last big project for a while. And we're very lucky in that we got financing for the construction of the bridge through, what was it? The 2021 Biden Infrastructure Bill. So, that's pretty exciting, but it's taking a very long time to do.
I took a look at the 2023 town report. I think there was some bridge work going on that was described in there.
We replaced another culvert.
The closed pin?
Closed pin bridge is the one we're replacing.
We drove over that.
Is that the one coming?
The one coming, yeah, that's the one coming.
Did you hold, did you hold your nose?
Yeah.
It's a little bumpy.
Go over faster. But, no, that's the one that's being replaced.
Right. Interesting, okay.
Since you went through the town reports, I'm sure you saw it, but another interesting minutia to Webster is that we also have the Pillsbury Lake Village District that is entirely within Webster. And they, of course, are a separate entity, so. That can sometimes lead to interesting questions that we get. So far, they've been fairly straightforward, but...
Do they have their own lawyer? I don't even know the answer to that question.
In theory, they have Mayor.
Our mayor.
I think from Upstate.
Yeah, from Upton, Hefield.
Yeah.
But to what I've been told, they have not been directly to him with their questions. They've been relying mostly on NHMA.
Right, okay.
But just something that's interesting because of the, you know, fully encompassed in the town.
And they have their own complete set of regulations. Do they do their own land use stuff? Or is that all come from the...
Well, they did.
They used to. That's one of the weirdnesses. So, they used to have Pillsbury Lake Management, which is basically the HOA for the district.
Right.
That dissolved and so that doesn't exist anymore. So, there's only the Village District, which is really the Water District. And then the normal, whatever happens to be in zoning is what we enforce. But their specific stuff is either from the HOA that doesn't exist to enforce or several of the pieces are within deed restrictions of particular properties or all of the properties when they were subdivided. But hopefully, we don't have to get too involved with that.[1609.51]
Let's hope. Well, lakefront property in New Hampshire is very important because it puts, it puts the children of lawyers through college. Class six laws and lakefront property.
Delighted to help.
We have plenty of both, so congratulations.
Do you have questions for us or anything we can?
No.
Well, thank you very much for coming and introducing yourselves and.
Thank you.
Don't take this the wrong way, but I hope we don't get too much.
That's fine.
I look forward to the Christmas card.
We have a loss leader product that Brandon put together for a small police department. A form that they use that I'm happy to just send to Dana and if she finds it useful, great, and if not, throw it in the trash. The question came up of, from time to time, the police take custody of weapons and firearms, not for criminal matters, but because somebody. Has a restraining order of some kind or has a mental health issue and then the question becomes, what do we do with this stuff?
Yep. How do we get rid of it?
So we put together a form for them to use, so if they sell, because the person doesn't, even if they can't possess it, they still own it. So they can transfer it or sell it on. And the police just wanted to have, and this town just wanted to have some kind of a form with a disclaimer on it.
We'd be glad to take a look at it, sure.
Yeah, I'm happy to send it to you and, uh, we're just trying to get it out there because we think it's useful.
Yeah, it's better to be ahead of the subject instead of behind it.
Yeah, and I don't know, I don't know if it applies to, for you, but if it, if not, chief can just throw it in the trash.
Thank you.
I will, uh, talk to the police about it.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, coming in, nice to meet you.
All right, the next up is department heads.
Be careful going back across the bridge. It's almost time to close it.
I don't, Dave, if I could just, I don't know if Gordy wants to sit with me.
No, I'm fine.
Are you, are you all right?
Yeah, Gordy, I'm waiting for the boss.
We're keeping him out of trouble.
Oh, is she going to? If I were you, I would run.
Hi.
Howdy.
You're keeping the snow away pretty well there, young man.
That, that, that we are.
It's because he's prepared that it's not here.
That's right, if he's prepared, that's what they say.
Yeah. So we will start with the fire department. We finished two thousand twenty-four out with two hundred and twenty-seven calls. The new truck, we went up two days before Christmas and took that for a drive. It's all set and ready to go, waiting for a check. Dana's working on, so that should land in town the end of this week or the beginning of next week.
Awesome.
Well, that'll be nice to have for town meeting, we can have it out front and you can see it.
Yeah. So, yeah, I, um, yeah. Well, I think it's pretty nice because we put it together, but, um, I think it will serve us well. Salesman did tell me if we wanted to bring it down and, um, put it out front for sale, we could make a quick four hundred thousand dollars.
There you go.
The benefits to backlogs.
Oh, yeah, no, no, it'll cost you more in the long run, but he was just, um. Getting there, so. Yeah, we took it for a stroll down ninety-five and around and. Of course, we got back and the guy said, how's it go? I says, well, an empty wheelbarrow always goes good uphill. December twenty-sixth, we went to Boskwin and worked there building fire down in behind Steambeck with them folks. It was quite a evening.
Yeah, I bet it was.
All at the same time we were there, Bradford had a fourth alarm building fire where a young man had barricaded himself inside and.
Oh, jeez.
They didn't get him out.
Oh.
So that was sad, but, um. That was going on at the same time we were there. Um, the last, what, November? Meetings were kind of screwed up because of Thanksgiving and then, of course, with Thanksgiving, then with Christmas being on Wednesday and then New Year's being on Wednesday. So we'll get things back on track. On the meetings and, um, Wednesday nights. So then, any questions on the? Fire stuff?
Sounds good.
Doing a good job.
I look forward to seeing the new truck. Oh, it will be nice, no, they all do a good job, we got a good team, we got a lot of good, we got a lot of good.
Good people, it's important.
A lot of good people, it's just all in timing, the other night we had a medical call and there was eight EMTs and. Six EMTs and two paramedics that showed up on the call and then the next three calls. They're either at work or not around, but we, um, take care of that because Tookie's so good to us in, um. Gets there and gets the job done, so. Yeah, other than filling in some potholes today, we haven't had much snow to plow. Um, we did do some crushing down to the pit. Last couple of weeks, got that. Probably six thousand yards crushed up, down to three inch. So other than that, on the highway stuff, I guess what we have, I didn't get here the other night, I. For the budget stuff and Dana said, do we have some stuff that you folks would like to go over tonight?
I'm trying to make it make more sense and everything.
Yeah, yeah, it's all good, dollars and cents, trying to make it more sense.
Yes, yes. All right. Any other questions or comments for either? I didn't see the police chief's normal, uh. Okay, did, did we get anything?
We did not, no. He, uh, he, uh, he texted me today.
I mean, I think we could read it off to you minus the accurate numbers.
He did call today and wanted to know if we needed anything, um, but. I thought you were lying to me today, so they're making out real well.
Oh, my. Yes, oh, we're going to dinner to his house.
All right.
Yeah, so.
So, uh, I, are we ready to jump into budget or?
I, I'm ready.
Do you have some paper that I can peek at or?
Oh, I'm sorry, no.
No, 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 no.
No, I did, yeah, I did.
How you, oh, I guess I'm probably good.
Well, I, I made this for Dee and one for Marlo, um, and Dave I know has it on.
His computer.
Computer. And.
I'll just take a picture of Marlo's and I'll look at it on my phone.
Okay, all right. Dave, did you, did you want to?
I'm good. And I can have it with me and then I won't lose it, how's that?
That's it, yes, I know, I wanted to, I'll get my, I'll get my finger out of that.
Are you sure? Your fingernails?
Okay. So when we talked last time about the budget. You had told us that there was approximately two hundred and thirty-six K that was for. Snow, brush, trees, mud and rock that was within the normal budget and you wanted a five percent increase on that.
Correct.
That would be about twelve thousand dollars in increase. We decided to do it a little bit different, uh, because we felt that it would make more sense, especially with all the restructuring. Uh, so rather than five percent on only that, uh, we've decided that five percent on everything that's within the budget. Uh, would make more sense and that turned out to be, where was it? About twenty K instead of about twelve K in increase going into the budget portion.
Okay, well, I didn't want to overdo it, but I always figured a piece of the pie was better than.
Yep, um, so the. When you were here, you also went over the different construction projects and preservation projects that were listed. And we also had, uh, the CIP's recommendation, uh, which. In short, said, hey, do these projects, but didn't fully fund things by putting it into the road construction project. They basically said, we want you to do this project that's going to cost, uh, two hundred and seventy some or whatever, two hundred, two hundred something. But we're not gonna, we're not gonna put that much in, we're gonna expect you to use everything that's out of preservation that would normally go there and a bunch out of your budget to do it. That, quite frankly, would just be horrible because then you couldn't do any of what you normally do.
Correct.
So we decided that the most sensible way to manage that and the fact that you told us. That for preservation, the main thing that was kind of a multi-year was the.
Chip ceiling.
The chip ceiling.
Correct.
That what we were gonna do is for the preservation fund, we would put half of the chip ceiling amount in, since you said it wasn't needed this year. That way it would be ready for the other half and doing chip ceiling the next year. And that we would fund the full amount for the project that, the, the projects that were listed. So to put two hundred, I think it was two seventy, is that correct?
I believe so.
Uh, I believe it's two seventy into the road construction fund. So that the, you can pick out of the projects that have been approved by the CIP to do the ones that make the most sense at the time. And actually have it funded from the appropriate place. In short, that's basically where we've, where we've ended up, so hopefully the majority of your. Basically all of your day-to-day preservation, roadwork, sand, salt, et cetera, can come out of the budget. And be easy and just, hey Dana, take this out of my budget. And then the preservation will be, you know, next year with.
Right, that will be, that will be put on hold.
And, and then the construction will work as it has coming out of construction.
Correct.
So that, we're hoping that that's a good simplified way to look at it. In the budget itself. I said, like I said, it's five percent up, um, we did restructure what's in what line items. It's purely our guess based on what was sitting there, that some of these were more spent and some weren't. If you want to change any of those, that's completely fine, it also doesn't matter as long as you're not overspending the whole budget. You had mentioned in the past that it was nice to see, for example, uh, line items that used to come out of block grant that were just for. Winter sand and road salt. And so if you want any additional line items in your budget, we would, we're, we're more than happy to break stuff out for you. You just have to tell us how you want it broken out.
Yeah, well, we made it work last year.
So. Because right, right now, that's all, the road salt, gravel, winter sand and calcium chloride are all in one line item. And so if you want that further broken out for like, this is more winter and this is more not, um, please feel free, like, we don't have a problem with that. It's just trying to keep it so it's in the budget and it all makes sense and it's easy. Did I miss anything from what we discussed?
Oh, I wasn't there, so you guys discussed, so I'm shaking my head.
I think that's basically the summary from what we discussed, so. Do you have any questions, comments, want something changed?
No, I have, we have what we have to work with and we make do and there's only.
And hopefully we give you enough to be able to.
No, no, it's, it will be good, it will be good, because you take that extra money that you're putting in road construction. It's, it's more than we usually do, but the project will be done. And it will be cheaper in the long run.
Right.
Start to finish and then. Yeah, no, that, yeah, because you figure you take what you added into that, that you took out of road preservation, because we're not gonna chip seal. Yeah, no, I, we can make it work.
Okay. We wanted to make sure that we showed it all to you and.
Yeah, no.
Because we didn't want any surprises and we wanted to make it work well, so.
I appreciate that, Dana's great, I go down there and we sit and he gets me on track and.
I'll send you a paper copy to him and see if you have it.
And Dave works his magic over here and he and Dee's, okay. Put the money over here.
No, you, you told me very specifically to move some of it. But, uh, yeah, so. I'm glad we can make that work for you then.
Yeah.
That's good.
Because that's what they want to do. Well, when we were here with the planning board with the CIP, they wanted to get the Detour roads on that.
Yeah, the, the listings were that, that you mentioned and that I think all of were in the CIP was. Detour, Pleasant Street Upper, Pleasant by Detour and Lake Road.
Yeah, well, you're not gonna do all them for two hundred.
Oh, no, 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 no.
Yeah, no, 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 I just want to make sure that I did.
But those are the projects that are within the CIP.
That are, that are.
And one of the things that we had found out when, when working on all of this was that the. Road construction fund can only be used for projects that have been approved by the CIP. So it would need to be one of those projects to, to use that funding. Doesn't have to be all of one of them or specific.
Solar repair house?
But that's what we've been told, based on the way that the original warrant article was written.
Was written.
Was that it's as approved by CIP.
So, so. In June of next year. We lose two roads over on the other end of town. We can't take that money from Detour Road and spend it over there to get them roads fixed to get back in shape?
Oh, you're talking about the emergency use, basically.
Well, because of CIP, I don't understand why the CIP, I think, I know you say that's how it's worded, the CIP. I think the CIP can make suggestions to the board. But if we have two hundred and seventy thousand dollars to fix Detour Road. And in June.
You have a catastrophe.
The Beaver Dam breaks up behind Johnny Greenlaws and we lose all the White Plains Road, but I can't take that. Two hundred and seventy thousand dollars and go over there to fix the road.
According to the way that Dana explained it to us.
So I think that needs to be changed.
On the, you mean from the, the way the trust fund is worded, is that what you mean?
No, no, I'm just looking, I'm just.
Worst case scenario.
Let me refresh.
I'm not here to.
Well, and, you know.
I mean, obviously, if you have an incident, it's gotta be addressed.
I think, I think one thing to. Be very, and, and I'm, I'm not even saying that it's not true, so just, please, just hear me out a little bit. You're out there every day. You know what goes, and some roads go quicker than others, right?
Yeah, it's like with a pocket road, all of a sudden that's like, something needs to be done.
I think it's more, it's next year. Have what, have your list of what you think is most important.
Oh, and I did this year for him, I came and sat with him. I came and sat with the planning board that, that night with, um, all my list. And the list that I had, that I went all through with all the numbers. I couldn't figure out why no one had that from the year before and Ross ended up having it, so I did all that.
Maybe we just work better to make sure that, because it feels like they just kind of.
So, I mean, they did.
A little bit, but, but I think what he's saying is different than what the CIP is working on. His, his concern is that if something happens.
Yeah.
Because the CIP hasn't already approved it because it's currently a good road and wasn't on a list, right, that we need to take care of it. So there's, I guess, two ways that that can sort of be addressed currently. We would be able to pull out of, for example, preservation, even though we put it in primarily for the, the chip ceiling. And there's also a, currently a highway expendable trust fund, uh, and its purpose is for highway, unexpected highway overages, basically.
Yeah.
And so we can pull out of both of those for something of that nature. We didn't apparently know that, uh, we could do that with highway when we had all of the floodouts.
Right.
So that was, it was never taken out of there, so that still has some money.
Well, good.
It's not hundreds of, of grands, but, but there's, there's a fair amount in, in both of them. So we do have, as long as it's not like super, super catastrophic, uh, we do have funds as, uh, specifically that we can use for stuff like that.
But I think, I think in the future, not to interrupt you, but I think in the future. The CIP can make suggestions to the select board. After I visit with the CIP and we go over the projects, which they're all great people to work with, if I suggest this is what should be done, I know they're gonna work with me. To, uh, pretty much, but. I just feel that. I just, yeah.
I, I get it, it's, but it's based on the way that the warrant article.
But it can be changed.
So we, we would have to discontinue the fund and create a new fund.
Correct.
I believe, if we wanted to change that.
Correct, right, right, and that's just, that's just, um.
But that's also what's being set aside for planned construction, not for in case.
Okay.
The, one of the thoughts that we had was that this, this highway fund, uh, that was for random overages. And the preservation fund, which used to say, well, which currently says for like annual road preservation. It's not really annual when it's, you know, a couple of years for the chip seal and stuff like that. Maybe it makes sense to discontinue both of those and create a new one that is for any approved, um. Like multi-year road preservation project or unexpected overage. And that way, that's the one that could grow and be the in case fund. We haven't fully discussed it, but that was a, a thought that we did have.
Yeah, process down the road, make it better, yeah, but the way it is now, it will work. Will make it work.
Uh, would you care or? Would you care or be interested or not care one way or the other for the merging of the highway overage and the preservation account with newer language that's not saying for annual preservation?
Well, the, that highway...
Yeah, the highway...
Special highway account is for, in case you have an emergency and you over your budget. But if that's in the line of road preservation, unless we put a damper on it, you can spend the road preservation down to forty-five thousand dollars and don't go below that because that's for the emergency. If we were all on that same page and we kept track of that, so when we were working road preservation and we got to that point, we knew that it didn't get spent on shim and mallow roads so her tires don't go out of balance. But...
Yeah, I see, I see the concern there.
See where I'm at that, just in case something... So that's the only thought that I would have there. Because that is kind of an emergency fund, so tucked away, if you don't see it, but you know it's there, kind of deal.
It looks like right now it's got about thirty K or so, I mean...
Yeah, they set that up, they, Tone Mullen set that up a few years back. Put a little bit in each year just in case
Right.
the unknown didn't have the crystal ball.
Yep, and, and of course, the, the other thing, if it goes beyond what we can do with preservation and the, that highway fund, there's also the contingency fund that is about one percent of the total budget. That's usually somewhere around sixteen grand. I don't think we actually used it this year.
We did not.
I'm sorry, last year.
So now that, that sixteen grand, that went back into...
It goes back into the fund.
And we will just refund it this year at town meeting, the one percent of the overall budget, correct?
That's right.
Yeah. No, I think we're getting, we're getting ahead on our roads. I mean, there's some roads in town that need some love, but we've come a long ways over the years because of the taxpayers, the support of the select board. And White Plains Road, that's all in good shape for, once we get that chip sealed in a couple of years, that will be good, I mean, that's done. Little Hill, I drove up there Friday. Culvert pipes, of course, are all done, I mean, but I don't want, I'm not gonna do a whole lot up there to rebuild that road, to put new tar down and so the folks at the end of, in their development get in and out of there with all their cement trucks and all their heavy loads and stuff.
That makes sense.
Yeah, right.
We've got that hill, we shimmed that hill in last fall, that the folks came down with the bicycles and the ma, the young man with the motorcycle and stuff, we got that. And actually, it stayed, it laid in better than I thought, I thought it plowed because it wasn't real thick. It stayed in place. So it's not the end of the world there. So it bought us a little time, but... The project out behind the lake, we paved in front of the pump site and the playground and sixty feet going on to Manchester Drive and fixed that corner up, up there, and I mean, that, I really, it turned out real nice down there. So we're getting there.
I'll briefly touch on fire for you as well. All of the numbers and stuff that you provided were, were fine, we, we didn't mess with those. The one thing that we did do was apply our, our stipend policy, which is a two-point-five percent increase on all of the stipends most years. So you'll see that added into there. But yeah, I think that covers it.
Yeah, because, yeah, the taxes are high enough now and we have a lot of tax bills along. It's hard for a lot of people.
Fortunately, we do a pretty decent job here and our school system, as expensive as it is, is one of the better ones for pricing, so. We make out fairly reasonable here in Webster. Even though it doesn't seem reasonable all the time.
I'll tell you what helps that school this week, is having that furnace, that wood chip plant.
Yeah.
I am so proud of that, I thought of that the other day and I don't know how much, I was gonna call Fred Reagan, see how much money we've saved in those years. Because I was on the committee when we first, I was on the school board when we put it in.
So they're still using it?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, no, I, I haven't been down there.
So they gotta be saving, you know, between, well, originally, those middle school and high school were heated by electricity.
Wow.
So that was a killer, but save, we saved Meg, I was so proud of that and they're still working good.
Good.
So, makes in a lot of chips, you know, it's easy to get or, well, whoever delivers them. So it still works good, like I'm wood.
But it doesn't matter if it's chips or anything, the price of everything, to get it from here to there, to make it all happen, it nothing, I mean, like a load of salt.
Trucking's not free?
I'd like to think so.
I mean, it's like the calcium, I mean, that used to be ninety-nine cents a gallon and I forget what was it the last time, a buck forty-nine, forty-seven? Trail load of salt is twenty-five hundred dollars.
It doesn't...
Full load is ten grand, so money doesn't go far anymore.
I'll look at the price of food, too, I mean...
Yeah.
It is, it's top, you're gonna be a penny pincher.
And got up there and I figured it was gonna be three hundred and fifty dollars, it was seven hundred and...
Seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and it was...
Oh, jeez. No emergency, I hope.
Fire call.
Oh, jeez.
Well, I guess it's good that we're not...
We haven't been there for a long time, this is the first time in a long time, so...
It's the new year, so they don't get their penalty yet.
Oh, yeah, they, no, it, we, I think we worded it all in, so it didn't go year to year, it was start to finish, right?
Oh, it was the end zone, yeah.
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 You did.
So you having your shing dig this weekend coming?
What's that?
Your shing dig this weekend coming?
No, uh, what is it, Martin Luther King's weekend?
Okay.
Weekend after.
Okay.
It, it's good Lord willing and the creek don't rise.
Okay.
This is New England and we do get snow.
Well, let me know if there's anything we can do to help you.
Not a problem, Emma, thank you.
Are you good with me?
Uh-huh, thank you.
Thank you very much for coming.
Go stage.
Go home, put your feet up.
No, I gotta go stage and wait for the police.
No, that's right.
Gotta go feed a woods furnace somewhere.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, Russell's been doing that pretty much this winter for me.
That's good.
He's been... Yeah.
We're gonna have to run a line down over the hill.
All right, is there anything else that we wanted to discuss about?
The shop, into the garage.
Do you think it's ready to present to you?
I think we've done it, I think we've talked a lot about it.
We have.
Okay, so I'm ready for that, see, see you, Emma.
Thank you, Emma.
Dave, what do you think?
I, I think it's about as ready as it's probably gonna be.
So let's do that. Actually, can I want more, cut off, no, I'm just kidding.
Oh, right, there was the cemetery improvement fund you were gonna ask Brenda.
What was I gonna ask her, I'm sorry?
About discontinuing it.
Oh, it's that, it's the thousand dollars in there, right?
Yeah, the like thousand dollars in it, because it's basically, it's never been funded.
All right.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't answer.
We'll never forgive you.
Well...
So that's about the online one.
Yeah.
All right. Unless there's anything ARPA-based that's not really budget, but it's numbers.
No, I guess I will mention with ARPA, I mean, the way we had to leave it at the end of the year is that it had to be accounted for, which I have done. And I would like to close the account this month and I'm working on doing that.
Oh, good, okay.
Which does bring me to a last time, last meeting, you did a motion for money coming out of trust funds.
Yes.
Due to the ARPA thing, I want to change that motion. And so I would ask you to withdraw the motion that you made.
There's a term for it.
How about I withdraw the motion that I made?
Is it revisit? No.
Is that the term?
There, there's a term that we're supposed to use when we go to it.
We, I can look that up and, and go back another meeting if you'd like it.
Which was that, the thing with, the list of encumbrances for twenty twenty?
No, that was, that was the...
And this is the ARPA money thing.
That was, this was the trust funds, it's, we have a lot of funds. The trust funds, things that were gonna come out of the trust funds, we're gonna take out of ARPA.
No, okay.
Really what it is. But I can get a ruling on that, Dave, and we can do it next time. Is it amended?
I think they need to make a motion to revisit the motion. It looks like you can either, it looks like you can amend it, which would then be like adding or changing numbers, or it does look like you can also rescind. So you could make a motion to rescind the motion.
Oh, rescind, that's weird.
And then just redo the motion. That seems...
I thought it might be cleaner to rescind it, don't you think?
You made the original motion, I think.
So the original motion was...
Because I, I think it was the one I wasn't here.
Yeah, you weren't.
Of course, now we have to rescind it.
Marlo made the motion.
I make a motion and now it's the rescind.
And de-seconded, so I guess we would need to know if Marlo's willing to.
No, I'll rescind.
See, we had so much fun.
Yeah, so make a motion to rescind it.
Okay, sorry, sorry, I make a motion to rescind the...
The motion.
Motion.
Present the six...
Second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We were having so much fun without you here, Dave, my God, man.
You're spending all our money.
Okay, well, that's good, and then I'll be back with the correct figure in a few minutes.
Okay.
Don't go anywhere, stand by.
Stand by. Do you wanna... Stand by.
What's that?
Oh, we're going to a different subject.
I have, I have a couple of things in correspondence, one thing that I did receive...
Is there any new business before we go to correspondence?
No, there isn't.
Okay.
We have, you voted on accepting the hazard mitigation grant and the state amended the grant, changing the performance dates. It was there, shortening the performance dates to May twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-six. So I need the board to do an updated motion, and this is, you don't need to rescind the former one, this is the wording they wanna use.
Oh.
You're gonna have to give that to me?
I will give that to you.
It's nice of them to supply us with, with English language, what they want.
Well, that is, yeah.
I'm glad they did that, yes, we don't have to be biggie mouths.
Okay, I would move that we accept the new terms of the hazard mitigation grant program, amended as presented, to reflect the change of period of performance dates from October twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-six, to May second, twenty twenty-six. And to authorize Dana to sign all documents related to the grant, as I believe we did originally.
Yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The next item I have is that we have a use of the hall on Martin Luther King weekend, as you know, you spoke with Gordon a meeting or two ago, I guess. And I have a brochure, the Trekkers, they call them.
Oh, yes.
But my question to you was, are you going to waive the rental fee?
What are the typical, I, I know there are specific reasons that we normally do waive that, what are they?
Usually you waive the, if it's a town-based...
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit. And also, it's been the, it's been the practice of the town not to charge for a funeral for a town resident if someone's using the hall.
Did I die?
You know?
No, you're just dying to rent it.
That's a little drastic. I'm not gonna let you get out that easy.
Tell Mary, she'll probably want some money.
So is there anybody from Webster in this Trekkers thing?
I don't think so, Gordy.
No, the only people from Webster gonna be there are Mary and I.
Oh, and how are you, why are you doing that, are you just...
Because I am feeding them supper and breakfast on Friday night and Saturday morning.
Wow.
And I am also going to...
I could get sucked into one act?
I'm gonna do Brenda, I already told her, she said, "Don't worry about it." I said, "No, we're gonna clean with the kids."
That's right, because it's your daughter, that's, that's...
My youngest is, she's the CEO of this nonprofit.
Oh, okay, interesting.
They have also reached out, the meeting house group has reached out and said that they watched, you know, whatever was on the town Facebook network or whatever, they said, "If the kids are interested, they would be more than glad to open the doors and let the kids go into the meeting house and go up to see the big wheel, wheels, whatever."
Yeah, right.
But it's gonna be colder than
Yeah, right.
stepmother's heart.
You think, we don't know.
It may rain, it may snow, the sun may come out, who knows?
It could be.
But if the offer's there and I'm gonna reach out to her tomorrow and say that right now it's a no, but the closer it gets, I will let you know. And if it's, if there's something that you can do, a little spur of the moment, fine, but if not, don't worry about it.
I should probably know this, but what is our rate for the...
That's what I was trying to tell you, it's two hundred and fifty dollars a day for non-residents.
And they're primarily just looking to use downstairs.
They're looking for the floor to sleep on.
Sleepy. It would be the whole building, it's like...
So it would be the whole?
Yeah, and, and the kitchen facilities. And if anybody wants to come up and listen to, well, they're, they're all seniors in high school, this group, they start in grade school and they work their way up to graduate and be out on their own when they get to high school. It's a team-building mentoring program. It's, it's pretty, pretty neat, you know, Stephanie just got into this, she's brand new with this organization, but she's not new doing what she's doing, so.
Oh.
They have two big buses, they tour all over the place. They have been to the Grand Canyon, they've been to the Everglades, they have been up to, up peninsula, upstate Michigan. They, you know, anywhere and everywhere, that they raise the money for. This whole thing is driven by how much money they raise to go do these things.
I was gonna say, it doesn't cost anything to join this group.
In fact, they have about a seventy-five percent rate of kids that have graduated, their senior program, come back and be mentors for the other kids, if they stay in the area. This is out of Rockland, Maine, and it covers all of the towns around Rockland, so. The original program was not this, the original program was started in Thomaston, Maine, which is the town just before Rockland, was a state prison. And this program was started for the kids that had relatives, moms, dads, aunts, uncles, grandparents, whoever, that were in the state prison, that had to move to be close to their relatives, or to be close to the one that's incarcerated. And this program was started for those kids, so that they weren't lost in the system and they didn't go, end up being incarcerated themselves.
Sounds like a good program.
Yeah.
So while I admire the, the goals and what appear to be the results of the program, with it not even being based in New Hampshire, let alone Webster, I would find it a bit odd for us to waive the rental fee. I don't know if we should ha, consider having a discounted rental fee for like educational or something similar organizing... for like educational or something similar organizations, but as of current, we don't have that.
Well, I think obviously this is something that has not occurred before.
Correct.
And I understand what you're saying. Being that they're gonna be here three days, which would, if we were to charge the full rate, that would be 750, I might suggest that you offer a discount.
I'm, I'm kinda with Dave, I, I would love to say sure, but you know, we had a kinda answer to the other residents of Webster. I could see them maybe thinking, hey, if it was the Webster people, yes, but you know, there is cost to maintain.
Dee and I talked about that.
Yeah.
It has been done in the past for Websterites, Bosque and Salisbury kids in school, that it has been done where they've used the old Grange Hall before all of this grew up in what it is now. Now, they used the Grange Hall, and, and Mary and I talked about it, and whatever you guys decide, it's gonna happen anyways, cause we're paying for it. So it's, it's not that I'm, you know, filthy rich, but I believe in what these kids are doing.
And I'm assuming that.
I would love to see this grow into something that could happen locally. We have an explorer group that's in Salisbury and over in Webster, that's part of the fire department, and they do things through the fire department. There are Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts and Brownies and, and Cub Scouts and all of that, that I, I would love to see the town facilities for our town to be used in our town or our extended community.
Agreed.
Do we have a policy or just the rental agreement?
A policy on rental?
Yeah.
You have, you don't have a policy like, that would cover that, no?
Well, but like, do we have a policy currently for saying that, for example, funerals and stuff would not be charged? Or is that in the rental agreement or just how we've done it?
How have we done that? Is that just something that we inherited because it was always done, I guess?
I think that's more likely.
Yeah, I don't think we have a written policy.
I think it might be written down somewhere, I'd have to go look, but.
And they're gonna use our downstairs for the cooking and all that stuff?
Yeah, they're gonna, we were approached by having a movie night, and the library has already said, yeah, we'll show you how to set it up, and come up, they want, they would love to have a movie night. I've already talked to the people over to the ice cream shop and said, "I got a group of kids coming, this is what I'm gonna need, and I'm willing to pay for it." They're gonna have an ice cream social, they're gonna make their own ice cream sundaes and all of that stuff, watch the movie and, you know, do, do, they're, they're gonna be teenagers, but they've got, there's either three or four adults that are their advisors that are gonna be with them, and my daughter's coming down, she, she runs the show and she just.
And you'll be here too.
I'll be here too. The pain in the ass will be here.
I did say that.
I think it's a part of the town hall rental policy.
Yeah, is there a?
There is a policy.
We do have a policy.
The town of Webster will grant a few waivers for nonprofit organizations that need to follow a criteria, need to be released throughout the year. Our Webster-based organizations is too, have completed info-annual fee waiver application that has been approved by the select board. I have never seen that application, granted, we have never, the only nonprofit I think that ever uses the hall is the Historical Society, and.
And the church.
And, well.
The church has their own.
But the church has their own agreement with the town that's separate from.
The, the church and the.
They gave the town hall.
Because of that.
Whatever the women's, was it the leader women or something?
It used to be a women's union.
Yeah, whatever that is, those two entities.
Okay.
They're gone now, I don't think, yeah.
Guaranteed.
And then they have to have proof of insurance, so.
What was that?
And there has to be a proof of insurance. The only thing they don't need is the Webster-based organization, cause I'm sure we could have you fill out a form.
Now, what does our insurance do about that if we're gonna have a lot of people?
Well, they, they have a.
They provide.
They have a five hundred thousand dollar.
They got a COI coming. So we should be fine there.
So while it's not in our policy, may I suggest then that we do something like nonprofit organizations supporting children's education be 50% off or something like that, to be added to the policy?
Well, the policy that we have, and they're never assigned, so I don't know if it was ever adopted.
Well, the, the official one is down in the clerk's office, we have to check.
Yeah, I mean, we'll know what's saying.
But like, we could say that we're gonna amend that.
You could amend it, sure. Yeah.
Does that seem reasonable? Or is a different percentage or number or something make more sense?
I'm fine with that, I mean, I'd like to say totally zero, but I, I feel like.
Well, what do people pay if they want the hall? 250.
250 per day.
But it's, the fact is, 3D, so.
250 per day.
If we do half, then it don't.
250 per day, if the Webster residents wanna rent the hall?
No, Webster residents is less, I think.
Webster residents, 150.
So I think you should have to, you have to charge something.
Right, yeah. So half, I, I'm, I think what Dave said, I feel good about that.
What was it?
What was the? Half of what we would charge.
Oh, normal, yeah. Okay, that sounds all right.
For, for any nonprofit that's a. How do we define children or whatever? Do we need to? I, I feel like that's a legal thing later on to someone making things annoying.
Something educational, like you said, I think, and, and helps with higher education or something like that.
So, I'm trying to get some wording here. For any nonprofit organization providing education.
Educational.
An educational program not based in Webster, there'd be a discount of 50%, am I right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are the fee amounts in the policy or the fee, or fee schedule or the rental?
The 250 is part of the policy.
Okay.
And I think the fees and the fee schedule.
The fees are in the kids' code, residents are separate.
Yeah.
And our insurance covers all that?
They are gonna provide their own insurance.
Oh, that's.
Now, our insurance probably would, as long as there's no alcohol involved.
We have to make sure that like, when we write it, that it's still provisioned, that, you know, insurance coverage, et cetera, but.
Is required.
Yeah, they have to, they have to supply their own insurance, is that what you're trying to say? The people that rent, this will have to, like, for this group, would have to have their own insurance.
Right.
Which makes sense.
That's usually what happens.
Oh, is that, yeah, okay.
And I think they had planned on that.
And, and that's normal for everybody, that's not a, just a resident.
Resident, okay.
I know the groups that we had go through the veteran cemetery.
Yeah.
The high school, the schools that came up, and we had a regular program for them, that they came through, they come with their own insurance policy.
Oh, really?
Yeah. But if it's a school function during school hours, they're covered by the towns that they're coming from.
Their school, yeah, the school.
Their insurance that.
Unfortunately, you have to worry about that now.
This is very true.
Fifty years ago, you never had to worry about that, but now.
Well, the worst-case scenario, when I was at the cemetery, the worst-case scenario that we came up with, we sit down and talk about it, was some idiot, which they, you know, there's more idiots out there than you.
Yeah.
These kids are going through the cemetery, they're going on the crosswalks, it's a cemetery. You're not supposed to exceed five miles an hour in there, but, you know, some people think that five miles an hour, there's gonna be another number on there, cause there's usually two on the speed limit sign. And they get hit, the kid gets hit there, and the person that hits him has no insurance. Who's gonna cover them? The state says, "We're not," you know? The federal government's going, "We're not," you know, it's a, you know, so the, the school, the schools have to provide insurance for them. And we've had the Rolling Thunder and the Gold Star Mothers and the Blue Star Mothers and the different organizations that come up and volunteer their time, they had to come up with a policy. So, the American Legion and the VFW, the two Concord.
Yeah.
Posts down there turned around and said, "We'll have the insurance to cover any organization that comes up and volunteers their time on your property. You guys can't afford it," you know? The honor guard comes up from Hudson, or they come from Concord.
Yeah.
God forbid, guys from Concord could drive up, they'd be drunk, but. But they, they are volunteers. They volunteer their time, they get there, they're doing the honor guard thing, and something happens to them. So, the, the two posts turn around and said, "We'll cover anybody that come to do something for."
Unfortunately, you have to do that nowadays, that's, it's not like in the old days.
And it's unfortunate that you have to look at that.
Well, it's true.
We could talk about unfortunateness here for hours.
So, my, do we need a motion for any of this, or?
I think it would be a good idea.
Okay.
Because I'm not gonna present this to you until your next meeting, which is after this event.
I would, I would move that we allow for a 50% reduction in the hall fees for this organization and rental, with future consideration for including that in our policy going forward for the class of organization.
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Have fun.
I, I don't know what night you're gonna have the ice cream social, but you're welcome to come. Richardson is, that ice cream coming from them, and they're gonna have the fixins who make banana splits or whatever they wanna make.
God, that's really hard for me to say no, I tell ya. Ice cream's my downfall.
Yeah, we're gonna do popcorn and ice cream the night.
Popcorn's good too.
Whatever night they're gonna have the movies, that's what's gonna happen.
That's cool.
That's good, that's gonna be nice.
All right, what else you got?
That's, that's all I have for correspondence.
We got signing and minutes.
And then, so we have minutes and we have signing.
All right, so that brings us to public comment before we have any signing.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Gordy.
All right.
Yeah.
Minutes? Oh, minutes.
Yeah. Dave, you watching? How'd they look?
I, I, that's through them, but, but they're yours.
Yeah, you're making me own them, aren't you?
That's for the ones that are abatements instead of apartments.
Well, I sent them in the first one, I put apartments, but I have corrected that in the, in the fact.
Thanks, Gordy.
Thank you, guys, stay, stay warm.
You too.
I can handle seeing what the boss wants me to do.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can go out the front door, Gordy, she wouldn't know.
I can?
Yeah.
No. I would know.
Yeah.
About nine, about quarter to nine, I'd know.
I just tried to help you.
Yeah, a lot of minutes.
Is it there? Yes, there was a non-public, oh wait, no, that was the same.
Should have two non-publics and two publics.
Yeah, there should be two non-publics, I only see one.
Oh, I only see one.
Guys are very popular, you only had one person, don't they?
You're just doing such a good job, nobody cares.
Evaluation, I was expecting, and then I did.
That is very true. They do care, but they know they're well taken care of.
Thank, thank you.
And I'll do that one then.
Oh, give it to him for free.
That's right.
So I would entertain a motion from someone who is here for the December 16th minutes?
I make a motion to accept the December 16th minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. And then, for December 30th, anybody have any comments, corrections for those minutes?
They're pretty basic.
I'll make a motion to accept the December 30th minutes.
Public and non-public.
Public and non-public, public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I need to ask something here.
Oh, sure.
Should be announced that the town clerk's office is going to, I know it's late in the meeting, but they're gonna, they're open March 11th from 10:00 to 7:00.
Oh, yeah, yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Just an announcement for the, at the town, Webster Town Clerk's Office for town elections will be held on March 11th from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. in the town hall. Following open positions will be voted on, select board for three years, trustee for trust funds for three years, trustee of the library for three years, trustee of the cemetery, three-year terms. Filing periods for those positions is January 22nd to the 31st. Please come into the town clerk's office to file. The office will be open an extra day on January 31st from 8:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. to accept filings for town office.
Uh-huh, okay.
And in the minutes, let's move that to the announcements section.
Yeah, sorry.
Not that anybody reads them anyway, until, you know, months from now, but. All right, what else do you have for us?
I have stuff to sign, so here's the trust fund motion. Is our updated amount.
Those are the best of the motions.
And have they already got the checks or no?
For the trust fund?
Yeah.
No, because you haven't, you haven't approved it yet.
So these are not, these are or are not the ones we're amending?
Uh, no, those are not the ones you're amending.
Okay.
You've withdrawn the one, the other one.
Okay.
That's a 30-page motion you gave them. You're sadistic. Sit there all night making a motion.
You know, I don't know, I'm trying to think of an easy way to, cause it takes a lot of time for this.
Okay.
Always gonna read all those.
I would move to request the trustees of trust funds issue a check in the amount of $277,967.30 payable to the town of Webster to reimburse the town for expenses to be withdrawn from capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds as listed, to withdraw $89,898 from the Highway and Roads Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw $117,816.57 from Road Preservation Expendable Trust Fund, and to withdraw $3,302.70 from the Bridge and Culver Capital Reserve Fund, to withdraw $20,000 from the Town Hall Capital Reserve Fund, and to withdraw $46,950 from the Police Cruiser Capital Reserve Fund.
Second.
Before we vote on that.
Okay.
I thought the heating stuff was coming out of ARPA.
I don't have enough money for that one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And then I have a Visa bill.
Visa bill?
Yes, thanks.
Couldn't it be a pizza bill instead of a Visa bill?
Buy pizza.
Oh, I.
That'd be nice. A nice little select board pizza party.
This is all.
That's it.
Yeah, just the top. The rest is documentation. More bills for you to not confuse with those.
Right, oh, you don't want me to take over, no, that's fine. I think some of those are really kind of familiar, cause.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then I have two accounts payable manifest because the end of the year. One is a 24 bills and the other is 25 bills.
Slippery little budgets.
They are, aren't they?
Oh, no yawn. No yawning. I don't, all of a sudden it's gonna be contagious.
Why are we paying for Windows eleven upgrades? Windows eleven is free. Upgrade from ten.
Well, they came and, and upgraded our computers.
Okay, so this is their.
That's a bill for their service and not for the.
This is their service time.
Not for the. My life, best agreement.
I know.
Would you like? You know what, I'll speak to myself severely later.
No, you're fine, there's nothing to.
I'm curious, with Avatar, I see four different invoices. I know we use it for tax. I think there's some that's dealt with with clerk. Use it for land use and surveying, uh, assessing. Is it, is each invoice like a terminal or is each invoice a service or?
Well, let's see, we have the town clerk software and then we have the assessing software and the tax collector software.
So each one is a thing from Avatar that's sent to us, okay. You'd think they'd just send us one invoice with them all on it, but, okay.
Were there four of them in there?
Yes.
I should go down and get the bills sent, cause I can't remember what the fourth one was.
God. Is there a service call one? Cause Mary does.
I'm gonna go down and get that.
Cause I don't know.
Yeah.
I never call.
You never call?
Yeah.
I call our assessing companies before I call back.
He won't wait to sign since, since he's gonna get them all.
And I usually don't need help figuring out assessing software, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, we're making fortunes.
Just wait until you see the timber tax bill I brought up. A whole twelve dollars and forty-five cents.
Wow.
Nice.
See, those are the ones should, that shouldn't do that. That's why, that's why there should be, that's why there's this, that rule. Because all it does is waste, you've got to run people.
Well, it was all biomass chips, so it was like.
That shouldn't even be taxed because we don't, there's not enough money in it to be that, but that's.
Oh, well, I get it. But I was just, I was shocked, it was only a twelve dollar bill. And I had, I couldn't be like, it was a massive sale or anything, so the size of the sale is obviously zero cause it's super small, you know, when you do the.
Super small? That guy went backwards. Unless they charged, or they charged the landowners, probably they did.
No, it's, the logger was the landowner, so.
Well, they were above board doing that, really, that's why that rule is in place to not.
What's the rule?
Well, it's under thirty thousand board feet. Oh, what was it, was it, um, so more or less if you cut anything under thirty thousand board feet and it's got a driveway permit, you should, you know, need to file it in ten. And that's because, you know, like a house lot or something you're doing.
Like driveway.
Yeah, because a lot of times anything that that was that, we would, we would actually. We would actually charge somebody to come in for anything like that, so.
Well, my unfortunate is I get to pay for work I process.
Well, whatever, you're not gonna tell somebody not to file it.
Right.
I'm just saying that is. Right, that's just, it's just, that's the reason behind it.
Okay, one is for assessing.
Shocking.
Oh. Then one is for the clerk, tax collector. I only see three.
Did you put it on there twice by accident?
Three, four, seven, three, three, six, three, two, three, eight, one, four, and three, nine, eight, seven.
All right, four, six, three, nine, three, one, oh, four, and three, six, nine, seven. What was the other one?
Um, I think your invoice numbers are messed up from something else then. Uh, let's see. Three, four.
Does it add up to your three that you have?
Oh, one of them has two invoices. Four, six, three, nine is Avatar assessing, internet kiosk, public data hosting.
Oh, it's the online kiosk.
Okay, okay. So each one is for a serva, uh, for like a seat, basically?
Well, we do have four services, cause there's the online tax kiosk.
Yeah.
So you can pay your bills online.
So that one can go back and where's, oh, here's the other one.
Myla, would you like to see these?
Sure.
Here.
So you, you, when are we down?
I kept a couple, Myla. I guess I didn't want to see those.
Wow, thank you.
Those are the secret bills, we can't tell.
Those are the secret ones.
Any other signings or missions?
Yes, yes.
You're just running us out of ink today.
We've only just begun.
Oh, geez.
This is a purchase order.
Hang on, I'll get another two.
Well, actually, I think I'll do this first. Um, those are the encumbrances that you voted.
God.
And along with that, I have a purchase order for the fire department for hoses, that five thousand dollars.
Hoses, that's right, hoses.
And then we have an intent to cut. And we have.
A timber bill.
A timber bill.
You already talked about the bill.
Required here and here.
Yeah.
Two documents to sign, and this is.
The backup, so they can see the backup.
Oh, okay. Here's the backup.
If they wanna see all the stuff, they can see all the stuff if you want. It all comes out of my computer. Why not? You don't have to look at it, I just don't know. Not show them something.
No, it's a lot easier to show.
That's right, I said.
Unless I try to sneak an Avatar bill in once in a while.
Those don't have to be signed either, just the, the actual bill. And then I think the other one is just these.
Those just.
The worksheet that shows you how the plan was done.
Those.
We don't have to sign this.
No.
Show you how we.
How I did the calculation.
That's the China.
All right, you need to sign that one.
Just so you can see it.
Okay, here's the back. Yeah, the same thing.
I think it's there. Are we gonna be out of here?
Do we need any non-publics?
No.
Speak now or forever hold your peace if you've got something else.
Now.
I would move that we end this meeting at eight oh eight.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.